Let's uh let's all stand and say the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Now, we are starting tonight with a public hearing regarding the unassigned fund balance retention. So Ruben, do you want to explain to us what we're what the situation is and ask for input?
Certainly. So part of our discussion at the Saturday session in December, when we talked about the budget was reducing the proposed budget so that we had a smaller number on the with the warrant article come this March. And so part of that discussion centered around technology. And so with a default budget this year, not only did we reduce our staffing by well, eight, eight and a half total positions, but seven new positions once the default budget was put in place. We also did not, we tried to go a year without having new Chromebooks and other items of that nature. So some of the technology spending, we've we figured, all right, we have these items, we have the numbers of them. We think that they're functioning relatively well. Let's try to do that. Some of that has proven to be true and some of that has proven not to be true. And so we know for certain that we couldn't go another year without having that the proper technology to keep that cycle going. And so some of this money right here, the three hundred thirty five thousand has to do with just about a hundred seventy five thousand dollars in spending on Chromebooks for really two years. So this year and the following year for our students, usually we have grades three, grade six, in grade nine would get new Chromebooks and they would have that for, for instance, grade three would have it through the rest of elementary school, then they'd have the Chromebook through a new Chromebook through middle school and then through high school and so forth. This time it would be for grades three and four, six and seven, nine and 10, because we missed that year. Some other items in here that we know we need to purchase at three hundred thirty five thousand has to do with spending money on facilities, equipment and other, other types of technology that we need. And so this was a request to say, hey, we have an unassigned fund balance that we carried over from last year, about nine hundred thousand or so dollars. Could we use some of that to offset the expenses? Could we purchase that now and reduce what we're going to be putting on as proposed budget for next year? And so that's why we are asking for this not to exceed amount.
Okay. Uh, thank you. Are there any, are there any questions about this? Anybody have any comment from the public?
Just a point of clarity on the public comments, just because we do have some people physically that may not be used to this. As you can see, there are some microphones throughout the room. We are live streaming. If you do want to make a public comment, I have a microphone that I can give you. You're not going to hear yourself, but we do need it for the purpose of pulling it into the stream so that people, you know, remotely and for the recording can hear you. So.
Right.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification. So this is something we discussed at length at our meeting in December on Saturday in December. Decided that this made sense, given that we've had problems with our students using their Chromebooks. They're no longer being updated. Some of them are so old, they were not able to use them in the testing that was being offered. The students had to take and disrupted the the
Yeah, disrupted our capacity to be able to actually get the proper data in the beginning to see where students were at so that we could make the right teaching strategies going forward.
Right. And the same thing with facilities, we're operating under a
It would, it would, it would impact, yes, this coming this spring, the the state assessment as well.
Chromebooks.
Mm hmm.
Handle the testing.
They require a different type of browser that the old Chromebooks can't be updated to provide. Yep. And that's also for the PSATs and SATs as well. So that along with the state system. They are separate from one another.
Okay. And so just to be clear, this is separate from our our public comment, which will happen right after we start our regular session. But for the purpose of this public hearing, Nick, do you have anybody online who is looking to comment on this specific?
I guess just for the explanation for the online audience, if you would like to make a public comment, you may do so by by using the hand raised feature at the bottom of whatever screen you're at, use that. We get a little notification. We can make your audio go live and then if you want to make a comment, I just need first name, last name.
Okay. As I said, we had some significant discussion of this on Saturday in December a few weeks ago. Are there any other questions or or new questions that anybody has that they'd like to raise? At the moment, okay. And from the public, I'm not seeing anything at the moment. Yes.
That's dust.
Ashley, sorry, one thirty six there, Rod and Ringe, and also with the ledger transcript. I guess the only question I have is what is the current total unassigned fund balance at this time?
When we look over towards Carrie, we see
I want to say it's nine hundred one thousand one seventy, but I don't know if that I'll just
Is that close enough, Ashley?
I
Okay, great.
It is nine oh one one seventy.
All right. And Nick, if I, if you don't have anything coming from the online community, and if there are no other comments, then I think we will go ahead and close the public hearing on this at this time. Okay. Yeah. Yes, but I think we'll do that now as now that the hearing is closed. Is that the right? So in order to vote on this, we need to do the motion.
It's a separate.
Separate, okay.
So we saw make a motion that we authorize district to spend three hundred and thirty five thousand dollars out of the unassigned funds for Chromebooks and facilities. Thank you, Charlie.
Yep, there's equipment and furniture of about thirty five thousand dollars at the middle high school. About seventy four hundred dollars of the same at the elementary school is what we had said. And then a hundred twelve thousand, approximately a hundred fifteen thousand, approximately for washers, dryers, the vestibule at JGS and RMS, those are big cost items. Rest from stalls, specific types of tools and so forth, scrubbers for our floors, steam cleaners for our carpets. And then the hundred seventy five thousand approximately for the, oh, there you go. You found it for the Chromebooks and projectors.
A second is motion.
Okay, thanks Forbes. All right. And Charlie, assuming this is okay with you, this list, I think it represents what we discussed.
Yep, so the, so part of the facilities.
Okay, so then all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and Nick, that carries seven zero zero. Okay, and then a public hearing on the safe grant. Ruben, do you want to give us a quick highlight on what that involves?
Certainly, the the number here of two hundred fifty two thousand one hundred seventy three, I believe, is the total amount. Am I correct? Of the safe grants. Carrie, have we, just a clarification before I talk about this, have we, are we only talking about the elementary safe grants tonight? Or are we talking about all of it?
We're talking about all of them. And I did post in the a public hearing notice, the breakdown by school, but I can say that right now.
Yeah, if you could, if you could give us the breakdown by school and then I'll talk about what we're doing within the schools and then the elementary, because we just received a lesser amount for the two elementary schools.
Eighty nine thousand two hundred seventy two dollars for the high school, seventy thousand five hundred fifty four dollars for middle school, twenty nine thousand seven hundred seventy four dollars for Jaffrey Bridge School, and sixty two thousand five hundred seventy three dollars for French.
And so we received all of the funding that we requested for the middle school and for the high school. We received about anywhere between what fifty and sixty percent of the elementary funding. Is that correct? John, could you speak to that?
Yes, based on the personally, one fifty eight thousand for JGS, but two point nine three thousand for RMS, one nine oh nine thousand five hundred dollars, yes.
So anywhere from a half to two thirds, depending on the school is what we got. And it's all based on about six different categories. Entrance security, classroom connecting locks for the doors, upgrading some cameras, hallway doors for containment, upgrading the PA system and some integrators for our monitors to tie into the fire panels. And that's basically the six categories that we have. Unfortunately, with the grade schools, we don't know what their decision process was and you can't appeal it. They just based it on risk assessment and they just felt for whatever reasons, the grade schools didn't need what we asked for. So they really don't get any of the exterior security upgrades that we wanted. And they kind of narrowed it down to the connected doors and the hallway doors for containment for the elementary schools. The high school, middle school got all the six categories.
So I know that, for instance, the elementary schools were asking for improvements with their speaker system and just the communication system overall. And that was what was more or less not provided, that and some cameras were not provided for the elementaries, well, for the elementary schools.
Well, the entrance security, they denied for the grade schools.
Right.
The upgrading of the PA systems, they denied the cameras to upgrade, some of the cameras are new cameras, they denied. And the integrators for the fires, they denied.
But all of those were approved funding wise anyway for this building right here.
Yes.
Yeah. And so I talked to Mike from technology and we're going to be, we've located funds, we're going to be doing the sound upgrades, the speaker upgrades and so forth in the elementary schools anyhow. We've already connected with the company and we'll have them go out there and start to look to see what we can do to make sure regardless of the grant. And so we're just asking for the board to accept the, of the grant funds and to allow us to go forward and use them.
Okay, great. Thank you. Are there any comments from the public about the safe grants or questions? And Nick, I would invite you to let the online audience know also that they can make comments or ask questions if they would like.
Yeah, same process as last time for everybody. Just use a microphone if you're in the space. If you're remote, use hand raised feature and then just first name, last name, town of residence.
And in the meantime, right, questions or comments from the board? Okay. So seeing none. I guess, Nick, unless you have something there. I think we can safely close the, close the public hearing on that. Everybody sees the benefit of accepting these grants. And so how about a motion to approve the acceptance of these grants?
I'll make a motion to accept the same grants for the grade school, middle school and the high school.
Great, thank you, Christine.
A second.
Okay.
Wait, when you say grade school, are you talking about both elementary schools?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you. And thank you, Kim. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Close, nobody, like seven zero zero. Okay, very good. And we're ready now to start our public session. We've already said the pledge of allegiance and probably should have waited until we did the public hearings, but it started that way. So let's go. Are there any changes to the agenda?
Oh, is that, yes, it is. Yes, gonna do it?
Add to consent.
I'd like to add to the consent agenda of Mr. Fortier being added as a stunt feature.
I mean, Joseph Fortier for the minutes.
Effective.
Effective the same date that is on for the other one, January twenty third, two thousand twenty three.
Okay, thank you, Kim, for that.
I'd like to pull from the consent agenda. Is this where I do this? The meeting minutes for December ten, nineteen public, nineteen public and nineteen non-public, because I was not here and can't.
Okay. Thank you, Forbes. And all right, so then with those changes to the agenda. Think we want to move on to public comments. And then we'll circle back to the live district calendar, if that's okay with you. I understand we have Nick Hill with us here from Little League, and I'd just like to give you a chance during public comments to you know, tell us why you're here. We do, we have seen a communication and would like to say that we're you know, very happy that you're gonna be running the program again. And we're sorry that the online application for using that facility seemed to be requiring a fee from you. That was not our intention and
But you want to move that up after public comments, because that's the thing they want to do?
I, I think that would be good to do, yes, we could. So this would be another change to the agenda, but would you like to speak to the issue just?
Excuse me, Nick Hill from Jaffrey. You need my address too, or no?
I think Jaffrey.
Huh, Jaffrey? All right, represent Mount Mananok Little League Baseball, and I've been the president. And I guess there was some confusion when I went in to submit request to use the gymnasium, RMS Gymnasium and RMS Field, as I've done in the previous years. And it was indicating that there were going to be fees associated with the times that I had selected. When accumulating those fees, it was roughly ten thousand dollars to our organization. And then I noticed after looking at my profile that we were a category six, which was a for-profit organization. So I didn't know where that came from, but I did send a submitted request to get changed to a category four, nonprofit, non-billable. However, in the my profile now, it says category five, nonprofit billable. So I guess it is just a little bit of confusion there, John, and you know, where I've been a part of the board for the last six years and involved with the Little League, we've always used the facilities over RMS. And we've never been charged a fee. We've done a lot of work to the RMS field out in the back, donating time and money, bringing in material. We've built new even think it dugout bleachers, benches for the, for the kids that are participating in the game or what have you, practices. And we just, we feel that it's, you know, our own field and we try and take, you know, pride in that and make it look good. We send over volunteers in our spring cleanup. And so I was just I guess I was a little shocked by the, by the costs where we are a nonprofit. And we do, and it's for the kids in the community, you know, but it's all the local kids. Last year, we had over two hundred kids in the Jaffrey and Ringe District. And it's just, it's a privilege to be in, in the leadership that I am and to, you know, help these kids develop baseball skills and get back to the community. But I just I guess I'll just leave it at that. I just, we were confused and questioning the, the fees and what that looked like.
Well, first of all, I'd like to thank you for your efforts as a volunteer running that program. And also assure you, it was never our intention to either charge your organization or organizations like you to make use of those facilities. And in addition, we, it was our intention to make the application process such that you wouldn't think that you were being charged. So obviously, we have to go back and fix that because that, that part of it didn't work.
You were like our guinea pig. And we we didn't make some mistakes. Sorry.
So I would, if we're, if we're going to do what I think we're going to do, we'll have to look back at that policy and make some adjustments with the language of the intention is to not have individuals need to come to the board
Yeah.
for that waiver.
Right.
Because I think that's what we ended last time with that the people needed to come or to at least request a waiver from the board.
Can I speak to that? So when we spent a long time with this policy and what we came to was that not all nonprofits take care of our facilities or are supervised or our groups that we simply want to give carte blanche to nonprofits, could be a lot of things. And absolutely, your group has incredible value. And we simply want to have the board have an eye on who's using a, a more deliberate eye on who's using it. It began with a custodial issue, a, a how are our facilities being used and overused and, and how are we repairing things and how are we paying for that? And how are we covering, you know, staffing for things? And as it, it was, it's a huge radical. And we spent a long time with it. And so this was intentional to say not all nonprofits are, and or are ones that we simply want to say, absolutely, you can use our stuff. There's, there's damages that come. There's, and there's thoughtfulness of the, the groups that we are inviting into our schools. So I don't, I'm not sure we do want to change this. Do we want the process to be transparent? And not a surprise, do we want the process to be fluid? So that somebody can apply and say, you know, I click a couple of buttons and say, yep. And the schoolwork can say, oh, yeah, absolutely. Yeah, that's, you know, it's there's no brainers, you know? But there's ones we really do need to be thoughtful of. And we want to really respect our limited staff and our certainly limited facilities. And so having an eye on things, that was intentional. And I don't, I don't think that this was an error. I think it was intentional. And yes, you are guinea pig. And thank you for being
I thought my mind, your process was to have the nonprofits form, a waiver request form, which the board would then review and pass as part of his consent agenda or a pull from the consent agenda. I didn't think the intent was to actually have people come before the board and justify a waiver. So I, I think that the intent and the way it came out probably makes me look bad again.
Is it possible to look at the categorization? As far as like, you have two nonprofit categories, one's billable, one's non-billable. And if you look at them, yeah. I, I mean, is there would that do some due diligence?
I, I think I see the for-profit and then five is a nonprofit. And youth organizations, which yours is. And then number four is support groups like the PTOs, the boosters and so forth. Jaffrey Rec Center, Ringe Rec Center. Town relative to elections and stuff like that. So if I were to look at those, I think those are probably the right categories. Nonprofit.
It's different. It's it's different than what's on the portal.
Ah, okay.
There it is.
All right.
I was looking at it. Like that looks accurate.
That's so what we need to do is address the portal.
Yeah, so, excuse me, if you want me, on the, yeah, it says priority for nonprofit groups, priority five nonprofit groups. And then it says under description, it indicates sorry, priority for nonprofit is nonprofit organizations, PTO, boosters, et cetera. And then priority.
The policy was changed, but I don't think it was changed on the website. So that's our error.
Yeah, on the website, it says priority five nonprofit groups, youth organizations, scouts, civic organization, et cetera. And then it indicates that it is billable. So.
Is that further down in like a after insurance coverage? Just make sure.
Sounds to me like there might be something that wasn't necessarily updated and like, are you getting this from Master Library? Where are you pulling this from? It's just right on the school.
It's your school website. It's the two thousand eleven one. It's right on the school website.
Let's KFR is
Okay, R is just the procedures. This is KF.
Five, six, KFR is the policy that's up on the, we updated, the board has an updated KF. Yeah, that's, that's Master Library. So that's a step beyond. So we might have to address that.
All good news is it's really
Well, anyway, we need to make sure that everything agrees with everything else. So we just
So if you look at this under priority five, it doesn't immediately that it's billable. So does that?
I'm sorry?
Right.
Yes, Forbes.
Nick, I just, reading your letter, I'm very impressed with all of how many students that you handle and all the work you've done. So thank you for that. I'm a little confused though, because the word nonprofit's been thrown around here. And are you a recognized, legally recognized five oh one C three or what?
Yes.
And so you are, and you have that documentation and the school has that on file. Is that right?
I believe we had on file, is that what you, is that what you just updated with?
That was, that was the certificate of insurance.
Certificate of insurance.
Yeah. I don't know that we've ever been asked for the five oh one C three.
I mean, I asked that because people can call themselves nonprofit, but to, to I mean, I ask that because people can call themselves nonprofit, but to to and and I am all in favor of. You're doing this for free. Don't get me wrong here, but to call somebody a nonprofit. Really, in in legal sense, you need the documentation. And I'm just wondering if we have that. Not that it really matters, I don't think in. This case, but.
I I I know what you mean, Forbes, and I completely agree, but I I think our intention would be both. Legal nonprofits, but also these support groups as it's described there, which are. Essence nonprofit, but they haven't gone through the five oh one C three. We think we'd want to support one of those groups. In in any case, thank you for bringing it to our attention. Thank you for what you're doing and we apologize for the confusion. Try and we'll try and sort that out.
Thank you.
And you are on the agenda for for approval of your waiver request and please be sure that we'll.
Well, thank you. Yeah, I appreciate that.
We can change the order. Okay, why don't we do that? Why don't we go ahead and change the order? And we'll take uh. Number eight, action item. Uh, K F R waiver request, now I'm gonna add knock. And then we'll leave the other action items till later, but let's take care of that one then. So if we could get a motion to act.
Motion that we include the waiver. And then add knock. Um, I don't have knock baseball.
I second the motion.
Okay, and thank you, Charlie, and thank you, Daisy.
I have a question before we go on this. Do we have some nonprofits that do pay a fee?
Not at this time.
And why are we waiving anything? Why do we have a policy? We don't have to charge money.
We have a policy because there are nonprofits that do request use of our facilities.
Right, and pay us.
And well, yes, because we have to supply.
No, I.
To supply someone.
I.
To unlock the doors, lock.
I get that.
It costs us to get into gym, those kind of things.
So we do charge some people.
Good question, though, Forbes. Thank you. So all those, yes, Nick.
I don't know if this helps clear up some of the confusion or not, um, but. If you look at the policy and some of the discussion, uh, the board just approved this revision uh last September. So it's not like we've had this change on the books for years or anything like this. This is something that's a recent change. Where the fees were either added in or reaffirmed. And then the waiver process for these categorizations. So this process, this is, I believe. The first time that we've handled the process since this policy has changed. We've. Not had other people come into the board level to have this. Type of discussion since this change has been made, which is why we're running into some of these potential, I guess, procedural things that we do need to iron out. Um, so it's, it's just that it's a recent change. It's not.
Right.
Right, that's right, Nick. Thank you for that clarification also. All right, so we have a motion and a second on K F R waiver request, now I'm gonna add like Little League. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. opposed, none, and thank you. Yeah, thank you for bringing it to our attention as well. All right. All right, so um. Why don't we go back and pick up on uh the live district calendar?
All right, so I'm back, uh, Nicholas Handy. Um, for those online, um, so we're just gonna, you know, pop the uh live calendar up on the uh screen. Just to give people an idea of certain things that are going on um. You know, in the next couple days and the next couple weeks, so on. Obviously, you know, we're meeting right now. Um, also, the uh middle high school PTA is also meeting, I believe, in this building. Obviously, uh, next Thursday, we have our budget hearing, which will also be in this bill, uh, this location at six thirty um on Friday. We have the uh middle school spelling bee during the bag, uh, during the day. I believe that if I remember correctly, they are, they're down class winners and are down, kind of trying to get the winners of the school. At the middle school level, um, if I. Believe they've uh released a flyer at this point, and I think that it's open to the public. Not a parents and guardians at least. Um, so if you want more information about that, you can just click on in. Uh, we have a uh NHDI residency program over at JGS starting up on the twenty third. Uh, we'll be meeting on the twenty third as well, because we moved our meetings from first and third Monday to second and fourth to accommodate those two Monday holidays. Um, we have no school on next Monday. Um. Poetry Out Loud Schoolwide Competition is gonna be uh on the eighteenth, so we're gonna be taking. All those students, they're gonna get a chance to read their poems. That will be a live event that people can attend. And uh will also be livestreamed. Uh, we do have all the winners announced. Uh, and then again, it's gonna be a uh schoolwide competition. We uh don't have a location note down for that, but again, it's gonna be the eighteenth to sixth.
Okay, thanks for that summary and. Do any uh the board members have either comments or questions? It's great to be able to get an update on events that are planned and are going on. And also to be reminded of them so that we can participate as as appropriate. Okay. Great, so uh again, thank you that, Nick, for that. And now we're ready for public comments. First, this is not on the hearings, but just public comments in general.
All right, so uh. It's me again, Nick. Um, the policy B D E H, which is relative to public participation, is up on the screen. For those uh in house and remote, feel free to just make sure you uh know what that says before making a comment. Uh, if you're in person, it's same thing, uh, just gotta hand you the microphone so you can be picked up for last name, town of residence. And if you are remote, I can acknowledge you by you using the hand raise feature at the bottom of your screen. Um, that way we can make you uh accessible to everybody. And again, first name, last name, town of residence.
Very good, so if there are other public comments from the remaining members of the audience, okay. And Nick, if you uh have anybody who's raising their hand, please let us know.
I don't have anybody online, but just want to make everybody aware that we do have a second session uh toward the end of the meeting. So if uh something comes up throughout the meeting and you want to make a comment later, uh, there is the opportunity to.
Okay, very good. Thank you. So then, uh, student representative who is not with us tonight, I believe, uh, we're in the middle of. Uh, basketball season still, and I'm sure that that's the reason.
Yeah, she doesn't have a game. She usually has a practice, so she said it's been pretty tough to make it. Well, pretty much since basketball started up, I don't think she's been able to make it. We've been in communication. She continually gets the agenda, um, so on, so.
Okay, so we'll hope to uh see her as basketball season winds down. Just a little while. Okay, then we are ready for the superintendent's report. Ruben, what have you got for us?
Well, later on, we'll be talking about the JRSSA. Collective bargaining agreement, tentative agreement with the school board, so you'll hear from me then. Uh, right now, we'll talk a little bit more about some dates. Uh, you saw the live calendar, a couple of things that are on to are. That are not on that calendar. This, there is a, I am going to Concord to talk to the uh education. Uh, state education board and just give them a little highlight of the great things that are happening here in this district. Uh, the superintendents across southwest region are choosing various states to go and just to give positive. Information to Concord. And we have a lot of positive information provided, so I signed up. And so be there on this coming Thursday. Also, this Thursday, while we are at our meeting uh during the budget hearing, which is an important thing. Down the hallway, John is gonna be representing us over, John uh Leclerc. Over there is gonna be representing us over at the PAC meeting, which is for our our construction trades. Group over here. And so that's the a group of individuals who help support the uh construction trades program. Uh, individuals from the community, people who are either construction workers or electricians or plumbers or people who um understand. And can add value to our curriculum and provide ideas for us to move forward and improve ourselves. And then next Wednesday, I have uh the third meeting of the elementary education committee. The short term committee, just talking about what are some of the uh. The items or the concepts that we want to see within our elementary schools. What are the barriers? Those are the conversations we've had so far. And so this next time around, we're gonna be talking about how can we address some of those barriers? Some of those items that are getting in the way of either kids um not learning to the level that we want them to be. Or our school's not offering something that we want to offer or um not, you know, how do we involve the community more? Things of those, that nature. Similarly, the next week after that, on the twenty fifth, we have that. A short term athletics facilities committee. Uh, some of the individuals who were here tonight are on that committee and helping out. And we're looking at uh a draft plan about how we can improve our facilities uh in. First and foremost, without raising funds through taxation. And so what can we do that way? How can we better utilize? The facilities that we have or improve them so that we don't have to necessarily build completely new. Um, uh, as that leads us into the conversation about if you, as a board, need to see something really cool. Um, I recommend finding out when the boys and girls B team basketball teams play. The best, uh, so I'm 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 on, um. I'm on, being recorded right now. Uh, and I will say, yes, I went to the girls, part of the girls uh varsity basketball game where they ended up winning versus um. Concord Christian, that was a, I saw only part of that, but that was certainly great. And I was at the boys' basketball game this past Friday. Those are wonderful events. They won. They were great. The boys and girls middle school basket, B basketball team is awesome. We lost both of them against Antrim. I went over to Antrim. And uh by like sixty to twelve or fifty nine to eleven or something like that, right? You could see. Learning happening in real time. It was so fantastic. Heather's out there. She has groups of five. They go in, then they rotate out. They're running up and down the course. You can see them concentrating on the skills as they're going. Uh, honestly, if they had some fluency and they're getting better and better, because I've seen them practice, I uh early on in the year. And I can tell you they're getting better. Um, that uh if they were, had some more fluency, they would be a a lot closer with the games, you know, their shooting. Is gonna need to take, that will be the next step, but it's really great to see this, I don't know, what, forty about? Uh, middle schoolers who in the past we hadn't. We hadn't had teams for them. They're playing, they're learning. I hear stories about sixth grade graders going to their friends and saying, hey. You know, I'm, I have a game. Are you gonna go come and watch me? Or are are you going to the game tonight? You know, are you, are you riding the bus home or are your parents coming? Just, it just adds so much more value to our school day, um, to their lives, to their experience here at. The middle school right now, and and certainly we have that same policy for the high school as well. But just to see literally in the one hour that they play, maybe a little bit less than that. The kids who start off in that first quarter and then they come back, maybe at the end of the second quarter, then they come back in the third quarter, you know, once. Every, you know, few minutes. To see their skills actually getting better in real time. That's. That's some awesome new programming that we're doing. I'm. Still, still excited. It is, it is so cool to see and it's so cool to see so many involved. I'll leave it at that. There uh, we, we have a lot going on. This is a busy month. And we all know that we have uh several meetings, uh, you know, this month relative to budget rather to. Relative to school improvement, um, committee meetings that we have that we normally, you know, take that we have. And then, of course, we're also working on um improving our communications relative to our budget as well, and that's in the works. And Nick's been doing a lot of work today, uh, Nick and Leslie, and we're um continuing on with that process. And we hope to be able to provide our community with as. Um, much information and uh help them understand the needs of our school district this year and this coming year and. So hopefully, hopefully that we can partner together and really keep on improving our, our school district. And just bring about the exciting things um forward into the years to come.
Um, Ruben, you mentioned, just because you mentioned the boys' basketball team, I know that the student rep isn't here, but um. Another great thing that has happened that I noticed, I don't even know, I'm not gonna say any names, because I'm not sure exactly who is there and I wouldn't wanna leave somebody out, but. A lot of our varsity basketball players are also part of Interact or the New Hampshire Scholar, whatever.
Yeah.
And they need hours. And so it's on Saturday mornings. Our basketball girls, the varsity girls go to RMS gym and they volunteer. With all of the younger range basketball, they hit the rec center and stuff. And so they give their time about four hours every Saturday morning and they. Love it and it's adorable to go over and watch those girls work with the young kids and. Teaching them basketball and then, you know, they start with the little ones and they're like. How do I hold a basketball all the way up to like a, an older team where the girls really get into it and like, you gotta do this, you gotta do that and like. They really help. It's really cool to watch that too and they're doing a great job.
Great, thank you.
Thank you. Yeah, so that's great.
Thrilled that this has not been part of your superintendent's report for a while. But coming back from the holiday break, how are illnesses with COVID flu, our speed, how are, how are the? You know, what's our status with absenteeism, students back at the staff, all that.
I actually don't have that data um tonight and I, well, I'm not, it doesn't mean that people aren't ill. I think that they're probably still in that uh same, you know, twelve to fifteen percent is probably what it has been. Within at least the the kids, um, that's what it was prior to the break. And I would, I would imagine it's similar, but um if it were higher, I would think I would get the email or a call. But uh we've had some staff out here and there, but not cer- certainly not to the degree that we had during. But the main um years of COVID.
Okay, are there any other questions for Ruben? Related to this report or other things that might be. Okay. Uh, great, so then. I think we're ready to move on to the consent agenda as amended. And. If there uh, if anybody would like to provide a motion, I would appreciate.
I'll make a motion to accept the incentive agenda as evident.
Okay, thank you, please.
I'll second the motion.
And Daisy seconded it. Thank you. Uh, is there any discussion, discussion or questions about the consent agenda or anything?
It looks like a pretty cool field trip for the eighth graders. I'm thrilled that they'll get that chance to enjoy the end of their middle school experience with this. Boundless, boundless adventures.
I saw the question come out. Did it get approved? They can go. Is that what we're doing right now?
I think that's what we're doing.
I thought it was still in question.
And and I'd just like to come in, carry on the uh budget transfer. Uh, such a nice uh, nice healthy budget transfer. Good job. Go that uh. Like moving in retro.
That's cool.
Thank you. It uh. It is amazing. it is amazing, actually, the amount of work that's involved and skill that it takes to manage budgets and size. We are grateful to have Ruben, Carrie and others in the business office doing that. Thank you. Okay, so we have a uh, we have a motion and a second.
Yep.
And all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. All right, okay. Okay, so that passed seven zero. And then we have our minutes.
Make a motion to accept the minutes.
Okay.
I'll second that.
Okay, thank you. So we have a motion to accept the minutes for December tenth public, seven nineteenth public and seven nineteenth non-public.
And I will second that.
Okay. And uh, thank you, Christine. And we send, so all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Okay, and that also passes seven zeros.
One abstention.
Oh, oh, no. Thank you. Uh, I just wanted to see if I was paying attention. Obviously, I wasn't, so I passed a six zero one. Okay, thank you. So you get used to using the same number and right, just to this very long. Okay, and um, now we're back onto action items, having already approved the first. Now we're on to another little item, which is the
that's a little item.
Board approval of JR SSA twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-six collective bargaining agreement. And Ruben.
All right, so uh, this is an exciting presentation. Uh, in that there's a lot of language, there's some numbers, but I think the story behind it is what I mean it is to be exciting. The, over the years, the JR SSA, the board, they have bargained. We, I think we've improved the, the contract each time. I think that we've done things that have benefited our community through this. Um, this experience, I think we've built trust, and anytime you bargain, because it, it can be tough at times, and we are, um, we, we, you know, have some of our moments together, get, get a little more spirited. But uh, anytime that you can use a process like this and builds trust through that process, regardless of what the written word is in this agreement, you've been successful. And so I really appreciate, we have someone in the, in the public right now, I really appreciate all the work that Eleanor has, has done over these many years and continues to do. Um, but I know that the JR SSA has ratified this agreement in a unanimous fashion. And so I'm here to present, I have, um, you've seen some of the edits already, so I won't take as much time going through this all, but just to kind of talk about the exciting things that we're, we're talking about here. We had done uh, an amazing negotiation, I don't know, four years ago, three years ago or so, and we had a multi-year contract. But then COVID happened and inflation happened, and everything just started to change. And knew that we needed to uh, open this up and to make some adjustments. We even had individuals in our deliberative session last year say, we gotta do more. You know, I think we were talking about um, custodians last year at fifteen dollars an hour, which was better than what we had been, and someone from the, the floor said, can we raise it to sixteen? Can we, you know, or maybe it was sixteen fifty-one of those. Regardless, we've we've seen, we've seen salaries in jobs all around the area uh, increase, and this is not just about salaries, it's about looking at our the language, looking at our job classifications, we have work that we would have to do if the board were going to, you know, put this on the warrant article, on the warrant. Um, to change up some of uh, what an administrative assistant means, what a secretary means and so forth, para educator. So there's some language changes, some definition changes there, uh, just to be a little more current. But also to speak a language that the other schools in the areas are speaking, so that when we do put these openings out, individuals might say, oh, I'm qualified for that, or I'm interested in that, that makes sense, rather than questioning. I wonder what they mean by clerical aid. I wonder what they mean by instructional associate. And so that was some of the work that we did, and that's that language on that first page. Now, some of the language changes on this next slide um, really have to do with some of the bigger changes to the, the pay scale that will be at the very end of this presentation. And so we, one really large shift, and to be able to do this in one swoop is no easy task. And so we currently are at eighteen steps. What that typically means, those steps aren't necessarily years, it means different, different things for instructional associates and custodians and so forth, because things have changed throughout years. Uh, bargain, you know, we've decreased from twenty-four steps at one point in time, means it takes a long time to get to the end of that scale. It also means small increments or increases as you go through that scale. And so things have changed, and we need to change with that. And so this is a, um, we came to a tentative agreement on a ten-step model that you'll see later on, where individuals, they stay at that top step once they get there. Uh, but if you've been in the district for ten or more years, then you would be on that top step, which would get the increase from the year that goes that we bargain and so forth, and then you get an additional fifty cents on top of that. And then we have some classifications that we change that require some certification. Uh, if, if individuals are going to take advantage of that, and though it's not a, it's not a large cost certification for a para educator to licensure is, is not um, a large amount necessarily, but you know, when you have a several people who are trying to get that, it, it, it is, it is something. And so it's, it's money, but it's also us saying as a school district, we value this. And so putting that into the contract was important. Another, this next item, which was a large uh, change to what we have been doing is coupled with some other language changes that you'll see later on, so we won't spend as much time once we get to those other ones. Uh, there is no language about, and it should say four oh three B instead of four oh five B, so we'll have to make that adjustment, that change. Um, but four oh three B plan with employer contributions. And so right now in the contract, and for as long as probably the contract has been around, there has been a clause in there about individuals being able to accumulate sick leave, and then after a certain period of time upon retirement from the district. Um, they are able to get back a, either a percentage of those sick days. So uh, the longer you stay, the more you get back and so, and so forth. Kind of this idea like, hey, I've been here, I came whether I was sick or not, you know, I didn't use those sick days, and so I get something out at the end. We um, took a big step in re- and going away from that mentality. We want people to use their sick time if they're not feeling well, for the health and benefit of all individuals, for the kids and for their colleagues. Uh, certainly giving the option to continue to accumulate, because we know sometimes you go through years and then, hey, this is great, I'm, I'm healthy, and then there are other years where the flu, RSV, COVID and, and strep all hit at the same time, and one after the other, and your immune system gets weakened and so forth and that. You know, so this gives an opportunity for people to accumulate some, so when they need it. Instead, we want to invest in everyone, so that whether it's the first year they're here, or the fifth year they're here, hopefully the first year, second year, third year, fourth year, and fifth year they're here. They're getting something, and so, and we're preparing, we're helping them plan for their future. So yes, we pay into New Hampshire retirement, uh, but this is um, a way of uh, helping individuals, you know, right, right when they start to also plan for their future as well. Uh, ten dollars per pay period, the district puts in for a four oh three B, next year twelve fifty, next year fifteen dollars, that adds up to, from a district perspective, twenty thousand, approximately twenty-five thousand and thirty thousand the, the following year. And this is giving that to individuals, it's not saying you have to match it. We, of course, are going to educate and help people know what, you know, this means and what they can do, so that people are um, certainly contributing if they can and, and want to on their own as well to prepare for their own retirement. When someone does put money into a four or three B, it has pre-tax, and so it does impact that net pay a little bit, not, or does not impact it as much as if it were uh, have been taxed already. So that's what that section is, that's all new. Uh, eight point six uh, is really just defining what already, the practice that already existed. Um, just putting it in writing, eight point seven is a new element here. And that uh, we all know that substitutes have been difficult to find. And then sometimes we are successful in finding substitutes, but it becomes the individual who's typically in the classroom, the para professor, para educator, according to this contract, that really starts doing the work anyway. And so um, we though, don't want to have it be a habit. There is some language in here that says it needs to be directed by the building principal, just can't be, hey, cover my class for me, that sort of thing. But that we understand it's a different responsibility, is a different part of, uh, it's a, it's really an additional aspect to a, to any sort of job description. And so increasing um, pay during that time, it's very similar to, like, if teachers were to um, the concept of when teachers in their contract say, if we, you, I don't know, uh, cover during a, a prep period, we're going to get paid more for that timeframe. So that's what's happening here. This is similar to what's in a lot of other contracts, some in our local region. And so um, we're excited that we were able to add this in there. Really for protection for everyone involved and, and to be able to provide our learners with continuity. Continuity is important. This is what I said, I won't spend a lot of time on, uh, this language here talks about the phasing out of the longevity. Um, really, the data shows that there are not a lot of individuals in this category. Um, and they can phase out immediately if they want to, or, or they can um, stay within the longevity realm and not go with the four oh three B. I mean, obviously, they can start a four or three B if they want, but there's a one or the other type of um, concept here. And there are a few individuals who may choose to take, take that instead. Understanding that these changes, though I don't know how significant to you these changes are, these are really significant philosophical shifts when you're talking about um, people who have been in a, I don't know, maybe been in the bargaining for let's say ten, fifteen, twenty years, and be like, oh, why is it all of a sudden changing? Um, and so uh, forcing change on people like that is, is not, we did not feel as we had more conversation was in their best, our employees' best interest. This is just uh, addressing vacation leave. It increases it a little bit uh, in cer- certain areas, maybe toward that sixteen plus area, if they've been in the district for sixteen or more years, and then um, making it a little more equitable in the early years than what it was. Number ten point four point four is really just putting into writing what is already in practice and has been in practice for the past five years. And so rather than me getting requests every single, every single summertime, and it's September saying, hey, um, we worked all summer long, because I don't know, pipes burst, things like that, and so we weren't able to go on vacation. Can I carry over five days that I had for vacation? And I say, yes, as long as you use them by September thirtieth, because you don't want to just keep on accumulating and, and using, so let's put it in there and kind of extend that. So that um, we, because we have people, you know, who vacationing during the summertime isn't the best for their own job and necessary, and it could be better for their family and them to do it maybe early in September, maybe around the eve, you know, as that links to some of the um, other weekends and so forth in that timeframe. The bottom one talks about some additional um, two additional holidays and what uh, members who had less than two hundred ten days, who were basically school year employees um, had one day during this last negotiation, and um, we're at three paid holidays. So moving in the right direction. This is something that um, hey, uh, I just notified, I just gave you a notice of one uh, tonight, so you heard that from yourself, so I'm, I'm doing, I'm way ahead of the game with this one. Letting the association president uh, know when a bargaining unit member separates from the district, technically, the person's not separating from the district, they're just moving from one one contract to another one, um, going from the uh, JR SSA to the JRE. And we did that earlier tonight in the consent agenda. Lastly, you can see that these wage scales right here, uh, if we were to look at what was before, these are um, good differences. I talked about the ten steps rather than the eighteen steps, they're starting salary being a lot more competitive. Um, and then uh, you see that there's a ninety cent difference between the steps as opposed to the twenty-five cents or the thirty-five cents or the forty-five cents, depending on who it was. This also does not differentiate this, that between categories, so that one classification is less important than the next one and so forth. Everyone's needs are going up in this current economy the same way, and so we didn't want to have that separation. We did not think that was at all uh, the appropriate thing to do. So if we go to the next step, you can see that that increment change in the second year of this contract would, if we go to the next slide, goes to ninety-five cents, I think you could probably, you know, feel that there might be a little pattern there. The next one after that would go to a dollar in between those steps right there, and that the um, base salary for categories would be seventeen, between seventeen and eighteen dollars um, for all categories in that area, which um, you know, it, it takes three years to get there, but we think that it, it's a jump in men- in many of these categories from where we're currently at, and it's a sustainable kind of movement, and it's a consistent movement. You'll see that uh, employees will see a consistent increase. And I mean like a dollar amount increase per year. So it won't be like, oh, you get a thousand dollars one year and two hundred the next year and five hundred, it will stay even across the board, and it's appropriate for the inflation that we are experiencing and have been experiencing uh, in in New Hampshire. It was a, I'll, I'll this end with saying thank you to those who served, thank you to the board for providing input and, and talking about this. Uh, thank you to the JR SSA and the individuals who met during that time. We always, we like it so much, we add days to our schedules, we like fill it out for months, and then we say, and if we need an extra one, we'll take this one, we take that one, and we say, hey, we want another one as well. How much time do we have left? And we just wait till the last minute, we just love talking. So.
It was, it was a pleasant but long process, and partly because there were some innovative changes that needed to be considered and thought about and
discussed, yeah. Any questions? Or comments?
I have two clarifications.
Sure.
Um, on slide five.
Yep.
You have uh, secretaries and administrative assistants.
Yes.
And I thought the administrative assistant secretary was an administrative assistant.
That's, that's a great, uh, that, yeah, that's a big piece of this. Um, so the clear, we had clerical aids. And we had secretaries. And so what we've done is we uh, are changing up the language and the clerical aids are doing secretarial work, so they are the secretaries. And so what we've done is we uh are changing up the language and the clerical aides are doing secretarial work, so they are the secretaries. And the secretaries, um the the name that is more really appropriate and. Um and talking about what they're doing, but also just in. The the, you know, common vernacular of what um. When you're applying for jobs is administrative assistant. So the two classifications have have shifted, so. Secretaries, if you're comparing old contract to new contract, the word secretaries means something different.
No, um or administrative assistants. Uh did they always have two hundred and sixty days?
Yes, they they are um. There's a different number of hours during the summertime. So they're still here those days, but it's five hours a day during the summertime as opposed to eight hours a day during the the year, so if you were to look at. A spreadsheet with their pay, you'd see their names twice, and one would have the school year. Some and one would have the summertime some. But still year round, yes.
Next one is on uh. Yeah, um page seven. Twenty-five days is five weeks, right?
That is.
It's five weeks. So will there be time? And the calendar year. For them to have twenty five weeks off? Or is that something they're gonna take every summer or?
Yeah, well, I mean, it this, so this is for the what we call a calendar year employees, and so um. Uh what I, what I would say is that uh there are other. Groups or individuals within the organization who would. Come close to that or be close to that, and so it wouldn't be much different than that, are, is there time? Well, yeah, some summertime is a logical time to take some of that, um we also have. Uh weeks that the kids are not in school, so obviously um we are, we also don't have. A large pool of individuals that are sixteen years and. Beyond, so you're oh, you're talking about maybe a handful at best, certainly right now, not even. Um but if we could get there, that would be great, and if that's the case, then I think we'd be able to manage that. That extra week. For those individuals.
Good question, Charlie, thank you.
Yes. These are the questions, it's like you were there.
No, thanks.
No.
Does anybody else have any questions or comments? Okay.
Now, do we, do we have a? The this is sambarized in the warrant article?
So that would be the next thing, what I would suggest is that you look at the warrant article and then. Um if the board could make a motion, because that will talk about what the amounts are total for the three years. What would go on the warrant and the. Estimated tax impact for next year and so forth. Uh the first year it will be less and then, you know, for the tax impact, but you'll see that. And then uh what I would ask is that you vote on putting this on the warrant. I think you need to see both or to do that.
Okay, so our first step though is approval of the contract, is that correct?
You you can certainly do that, I am suggesting that you view everything first and um I did not put a slide in here that. That gives you the warrant because that's the next thing that's on your agenda. So and Carrie was making sure that all the wording and everything was done properly and. Um I was fearing that my wording, if I had, because I did this last week, um might not be correct or accurate.
So I don't need to see the warrant article, all I'm asking for is what is the three-year cost? And we should be able to tell that to the board based on the fact that it's a.
Yes, that's what's gonna be on the warrant, the three-year cost.
I'm asking for the three-year cost now.
Okay.
Okay. I wanna know what, I wanna know what this contract is.
So this is the next item underneath your action items uh that will part of it, right, fini- finalization of warrant articles. But this is the language that um would be for that article having to do with this specific item.
Carrie, can I ask a question? Uh why is the? Tax rate increase. Lower for Jeff, what for range?
Remember exactly what valuations are in the towns formula. But it comes out to. A higher percentage for Jaffrey based on their valuations versus range. So you'll see a lower, a lower increase for. Jaffrey and a higher increase for range in the operating budget because of the adequacy that's applied, Jaffrey gets a lot more adequacy aid.
So it's the same though for the other warrant.
The other warrant articles will all be um. Or a higher increase for Jaffrey and a lower one for range, yes.
Thank you for that, Carrie.
You're welcome.
Okay, so what's the the total of the contract? Three years?
Yeah, let me just uh calculator to it. Okay. Five twenty-one, seven fifty-eight. To compare, JRSSA for one year was about four fifty.
Those, these are the increases.
That's what I mean.
So we're going from four fifty to.
No, 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 sorry, um. These are the increases.
Right.
So what I meant was, for instance, last year on the warrant, the increase in one year for JRE. Was about four fifty, just to kind of compare with this being a three-year. Increase. Now there are fewer staff members.
To me, that's apples to oranges.
Okay.
Right, what, what I'm talking about is what is the current? Total for JRSSA.
Oh, the current total.
Yeah. These are anchored.
These are incremental, yes, uh.
Right, I just wanna know.
Increase to the, so what do we, what are we currently? What's the current sum for all of JRSSA members right now? Do you have that? Okay, cuz I might have it as well, I believe, I believe the answer is.
Yeah, it should be.
Two million, but.
Be in your current.
Two million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty. And forty-eight cents. So close to two point four.
Point four, no?
Look, two, well, I mean, it two hundred third, two hundred, two million, three hundred eighty-nine thousand.
Okay.
Yeah, so, yeah, two point four.
And we're talking about. One twenty-three increase, that's.
So that.
What? Clearly not, like, that's for sure.
And the. Well, I mean, there's another aspect to this, I think the other aspect of this is that we. We opened this contract a year early. So there are, there are other costs in there that are in our budget, and so um I don't know. Wha- what you mean by, so at the end of. I mean, these are estimated costs, you know, I I it looks like a two point five.
Talk about five point one percent, right?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah, five point one. Yep.
That's not even inflation rate.
It is not even inflation rate now.
What's good to me?
But because we did something last year.
Well, I mean, that's, it's why it works on this right here, why it doesn't raise the tax rate as high, but the um.
Well, that was approved by the vote.
Approved by the voters already, right.
Okay, so that's.
Yep.
Cities and uh you know, Jeffrey and Ringe have already agreed to that. What happened in the past isn't important, what you're gonna prove.
That's right.
In March, and that's what we're looking at, we're looking at five point one.
Yeah, from.
The other, any.
From current, yes.
From current.
Yep.
And the others is approximately the same, cuz you had the one twenty-three to the two point four.
Yes.
So it's, yeah, that's roughly around five percent per year.
Yep.
Which is reasonable. Considering inflation, considering uh social security increases. When you're talking about what, about eight point two percent security?
Eight point, eight point. What is it? Eight point seven, yeah.
So my elderly and and Jeffrey and Range, right? Um, I'm not gonna get buried by this.
Well, and this definitely uh. Gives us an oper- well, I I shouldn't say definitely, we believe this gives us an opportunity to um attract individuals. And have individuals stay within our organization as well. And be able to uh.
So we got a competitive.
It's.
Hiring strategy.
Competitive hiring strategy, which is also part of the the idea with some of that language changes and the four or three B changes.
That's all the questions I have.
Yep, thank you.
Okay. So. If I was saying you correctly, you'd like to move on to the remainder of the warrant articles. The next section.
Well, now that we've done this one right here, this is the warrant article that I was asking you to wait for, because this is what the uh amount was. If we could uh vote on that, the JR SSA CBA, whether to put it on. This right here, that would be great.
Okay, now Charlie's asked some good questions, does anybody else have questions that they would like to? Ask about this contract or its impact or anything else? Oh, okay. Well, again, thanks to everybody who was involved, and uh if we could have a motion to approve the uh. The CBA. As a warrant article. That would be appreciated.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the CBA. With the JRSSA.
I I think, thank you.
I'll second the motion.
And and thank you, Daisy, okay. Are there any questions?
Just the motion to approve this. Be CBA.
CBA, that's right, yeah. So all those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Okay, well, pose, no, so that passed seven zero. And. Now we're on to the finalization of the warrant articles.
Now, we don't have to worry about this warrant article, because it's specified by law, and it can't be amended, so. It is what it is.
Okay. So the other warrant articles that we talked about were uh warrant articles that had to do with the. Building maintenance capital reserve fund. The number that we came up with on that Saturday, the tenth of December, was four hundred thousand. This is the language right there, I'll read that for you. Shall the school district vote to raise and appropriate the sum of four hundred thousand dollars to be placed in the SAU forty-seven building maintenance capital reserve fund established in nineteen ninety? Created for the reconstruction and repair of real estate buildings and capital equipment. This, the key piece here is that it is asking, uh this is in addition. To the budget, it's not, for instance, coming out of uh any type of overage that we have, any, any. Any unassigned fund balance or anything of that nature at the end of the year.
How much is in that fund now?
Approximate, well, right now. Is it sixteen, fifteen, sixteen thousand? After what it is, what is currently promised in a sense, yes, is is utilized, it will be about fifteen or sixteen thousand.
After that four hundred is taken out, obviously.
No, 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 this would be adding it in.
Oh.
To replenish.
Oh, being taken from that nine thousand that we were talking about earlier?
There were um, John, would you mind if you could or Carrie um tell a few of the things that the. That this capital reserve fund used thi- this year, where, you know.
Yeah, the the biggest chunk that came out of that this past year was the uh wood shop. Air quality improvement, that was like two hundred and fifty-three thousand. And then we had some doors that it took away about twenty-eight thousand dollars and so forth.
The ventilation system.
Yes, right.
How much was that again?
About about two hundred and fifty-three thousand.
Okay, and the issue there was that. We received information that that was an unhealthy situation and potentially dangerous, is that right?
Very, very unsafe. We had flammable issues, you know, with with uh dust, we didn't have any dust collectors or anything in there, so.
So there were other elements of safety with that as well discussed, because we keep the. Garage door open often, so there's airflow coming in all the time. Uh and the school board policy of not propping. Doors open due to other safety reasons, this became a higher priority.
Access to the building.
Access to the building, et cetera, we didn't wanna have access to the building, so this would um basically keep everything locked up. With the appropriate airflow and cleaning of the air.
What what's interesting is that it's a sort of very important improvement to. The facilities that really has been needed for a long time. This wasn't a new issue. And so in a sense, it's just another area where we are making improvements as in the HVAC and. Trying to get these buildings ready for the the coming decades.
We're very fortunate to be doing it during the, we got a better price as a result of it being part of the entire HVAC, the people are working here right now. Um I think also what's nice is that as we have more conversations about the uh potential for um. Improving our CTE. Facilities with the grant funding and so forth from the state down the, you know, a couple of years down the road. Uh this is an item that we're able to remove and use. In that facility as well, it's not something you'd have, you'd lose if you had to tear down something or renovate, you could, you could. Take that system and make sure that the um items are usable.
I think to me, the key element is the fact that it's a health and safety issue. That students couldn't work in that environment without it being a health hazard, but it's also a fire hazard. And the fact that we had to open the external doors to provide uh air circulation. Creates a real safety issue. Was any of this used, was, did we use anything from the reserve for any exterior doors?
We did for JGS in the middle schools, like twenty-eight thousand dollars.
Which is another clear safety issue.
Yes, yeah.
You know, it's not something that you can decide, well, I put this on, this is something you have to do because of the. The safety uh that it provides for our students.
So that's one of those articles, if um obviously there's uh opportunity for you to change that. Change that amount, um but I don't think that I'm hearing anyone say I don't want to do something for the. S A U forty seven building maintenance capital reserve fund that was established in nineteen ninety.
Now I have another question, but when I left the meeting. I said I would support the the board's vote on warrant articles.
Mm hmm.
Was this article voted on?
Was this article voted on? I believe it was.
I.
Because if it was, it was, if it was voted on, it's already decided by the board. So we don't need to.
I mean, these two were voted on. I'm just pulling up the meeting minutes.
Yeah, so while he's pulling that up, I believe the votes were. One, to do this out of, you know, uh taxation. Further, you know, further taxation. And the other one that we would have on here that had to do with the student services, the special ed reserve fund would be from. The current. Operating budget that we had, if we had anything left over. In the tune of about hundred fifty thousand, which we'll see in a little bit. And you, of course, might want to raise that to two fifty, one million, you know? Just, that's a joke.
And yeah, both of these, just to confirm the vote, uh the motion, it was to have these two warrant articles being article five. And then the following article, article six.
So it wasn't.
These are the, yeah, it was the six articles that we have. Right now being election of officers, budget, the two C B A. Articles, and then these two fund based articles have all been in one way, shape, form at this point. Uh voted on by the board.
Well, the C B A article, you didn't know numbers till tonight. And the other, though, the four hundred thousand here, and if we can go to the um other one. Students, the student services real fast, and we come back to this in a second. For what I'm about to say. Um, hundred fifty thousand here. Um, these numbers are what the board voted on. He voted here, the one hundred fifty thousand um to be. With such amount to be funded from the June thirtieth fund balance available for transfer on July one. And I believe my, I guess my clarification on this one, Carrie, is do we need to have, shall the school district vote to raise an appropriate the sum of up to? Because there could, there's, it's possible that. Like there's a hundred thirty thousand dollars left in the budget at the end of the year, and we wouldn't be able to actually do the one fifty. So that's the only thing I would say here. But you can, yeah, I would think that we would need to add up up to one hundred fifty thousand. But here you'll see that the um no additional tax impact. Which we kind of knew anyway at the tenth meeting, but as for the four hundred thousand dollar one, we didn't have a tax impact necessarily, so this one. Has the estimated tax impact on it. So you voted. Without having in writing what the estimated tax impact was, and that's the purpose of tonight, is to vote. On these to say, yeah, we we or we reaffirm that this is how we want to go with the knowledge of what we have up here on the screen. I mean, you're right, the votes have happened.
Right, no, that makes really good sense.
And you've.
No word for the waiting for the J R S to say what.
In the J R S, everyone had to wait, yes.
At least it's four sixteen, I mean, unassigned fund.
So this one will say, shall the school district vote to um. Raise an appropriate up to a hundred and fifty thousand.
Yeah, I just added that in.
So take the sum of off, though.
Oh.
Free, up to one hundred and fifty thousand. Please.
Okay, so what that means is if we have less than a hundred and fifty at the end of the year. That's where that's gonna go.
Thank you.
Mm hmm.
Okay, I just want to raise a cautionary flag. That if we have zero. Uh fund balance at the end of the year. Right, our um. Reserve fund is only going to be four hundred K. So we better not have any pipes go bad under the Pratt. You better not have any. Construction work that runs into any kind of cost overruns. I mean, we're gonna be in. And we got half a school year to go yet, so.
And you certainly don't want it to fall budget. On top of it.
No, that's a good caution, Charlie, and potentially, but hopefully when we get there, we will have. Nothing to surplus to fully fund that. Unassigned fund balance. Okay, so now that we've amended Article Six to make it clear that it's up to hundred fifty thousand, do we need to vote on this again? And. Also, are these warrant articles subject to review on Thursday? At a. At our.
I read one except the J R S S A.
Okay.
And and the.
And the default.
And and the, well. The default is determined by the school board.
Sure.
So we can change it.
Yeah.
Whenever, but uh the offices we can't change here. Or I know how many. Positions are available in Jeffrey and Range and moderator and all that stuff.
Well, that would be the next article, right, would be. The article one, yeah, the first article.
Yeah.
Now we went a little out of order because first two are always, almost always the same, with the exception of if there's a bond.
I think.
Yes.
Those warrant articles, you know, I think are established by law.
But first one.
First one and.
So we have three board members that will be on the ballot or positions. One finishing out. Two out of, you know, the the three years, and then the other ones. Who are those individuals? Is it?
Yeah.
Hey, two.
And then Paul, right, is that third one?
Paul would have been the, yeah, his, he serves about a, about a year. It's the Paul Forbes ballot.
So this is the budget that's been voted on right now.
Yeah, this is the current number that you guys.
That we're at forty two. So that's a decision of the school board. So all we're deciding is whether or not to. Uh. Prove the warrant article, placement of the warrant article, and I have one.
Is that the face that this happens at, Carrie, or are we mostly just discussing what we want to present for? Budget hearings, like, are they taking formal places on the warrant votes, or does that happen after deliberative?
No, so the the board already.
Articles that are required by law.
Right.
They can't be changed. Right, and there are other articles that can be changed after the budget hearing. If the budget, if the public presents information that makes us decide that. We want to change a warrant article, we can do that. So it's, and then it has to be. Determined at the end of the meeting. Whatever's approved in that meeting, that's what goes on the warrant.
Right, so during the budget hearing. Any changes to the warrant articles have to be made during the budget hearing, and then. You would close and go into session, and then at that point, you're just voting whether you recommend or you don't recommend. So.
So I think the point of tonight's discussion, if I'm not mistaken, is to make sure that the board's comfortable with these six warrant articles moving forward. Or if there need to be additional warrant articles or changes at this point in time, correct?
Mm hmm. Yep, just so we're ready for the Thursday session.
So again, the summary of that is that it's six warrant articles. This, these are just the start of the slides for Thursday. It's all bust through a lot of the slides. First one being the positions, as we stated. Uh, one in each town, and then uh somebody to uh fill Paul's two remaining years. And then the moderators, the yearly ones. We have the budget, which would be budget or default. Nation, we have the uh J R S S A C B A. Between the three year C B A. We have the additional article that says should it be defeated, um can we call a special meeting to address cost items, which is a complimentary article. If the fifth warrant article, which is the four hundred thousand for building maintenance, that's raised through taxation. And then we have Article Six, which is the hundred fifty for the special education fund. That would be a fund balance.
Okay. Anybody have any questions on any of these six? They all look good as as is.
Mm hmm.
Then I think we're ready to go on to uh our Thursday budget hearing, please, okay?
We'll finish up the slides.
Right.
So this is a. Request. Um. It's a kind of, it's a bit of a unique request. Uh, it doesn't cost the district anything. It gives us the opportunity to um. Do some building from within the organization. And so currently, right now, we have uh. At least one individual who uh has special ed certification, works in one of our schools. And also has the desire to um start working on a certification and counseling. Um, there's a lot of. Overlap with what this person currently does and the concept of counselor. We may, we have received a. Uh retirement letter, not for this coming year, but for the following season afterwards, so um. Like one of our counselors not saying that, you know, we're sliding anyone in or anything like that, but I. School counselors are not easiest, not easy to find. King State does, no longer has a school council program. Um, the state, uh this person would like to uh do some work with our um existing school counselors as kind of a. A way for getting certification and to be mentored by that, this, the Department of Education does not permit that unless that's. Part of the job of that person. And so uh what we'd like to do is uh change uh this type of. Job description right here, um and to be able to, I'll come back and have it applied to a person at some point in time. But just basically you being accepting, like, we can. Lend these positions together right here, uh which would allow us to be able to help someone get some certification. And continue their improvement and potentially, and potentially for our district.
So these are both different jobs that you're pushing together, school counselor and a special education teacher.
Well, we have currently, right now, we have a special educator who works with behaviors and with emotional needs. And would like to extend that into school counseling, which of course blends nicely with that. Um, the person's not permitted to do some of that work. Um, in a current job description and also cannot get certified very easily without that being part of her. In this case, her, but it could be certainly someone else down the road, uh role.
Like, so.
This is how, this is giving us the opportunity to help that person expand their repertoire, I guess you could say.
I guess so. Basically, what I'm asking is, my brain is saying. Possibly the way this could work is if a person is a special education teacher, they can now also be a school counselor without.
This, this is just a specific instance um in our district. It would not be for all special educators. This is a specific, right now, we have. An individual who wants to be able to get a certification and counseling. We are not permitted to go about doing that without that person having the school counseling as part of the job. The person is doing. And aspects of the role currently and wants to actually continue the educational process that way. This would help that individual. Be able to, uh we believe. Um, be able to do an alternative certification through the state. In our district.
And broaden their ability.
Broaden their skills, broaden their.
Through what educational process, like just through? It's like, how are they?
Mm hmm.
I'm super confused.
It would be an alternative certification process that I'm talking about. Like we are doing with many individuals. We have a lot of uh regular educators who are. Uh, doing an alternative process to be a special educators. Sometimes that involves um workshops, often involves taking some classes. Um. So whether it be through Granite State College or um Franklin Pierce University or King State College. It to meet some of the competencies of that certification. This would be very similar to that, but in order to do an alternative certification. You have to um be hired for the role.
Mm hmm.
And you also need to have a certified mentor.
For. For the piece you're missing?
For the piece you're missing.
Mm hmm.
Mm hmm.
And so you're asking what? To mend that, like, kind of melt these two together so that they can be. Certified in one of the areas that they're not certified in.
That's correct. It's a little, I realize it's a little bit of a different ask. Um, but I also know that it is, um, we are this thinking in the future. Uh. As we know, we need more social emotional support in our elementary schools, that this is an opportunity. It doesn't, it doesn't bind us to shifting one person to another role or anything like that down the road, as in uh hiring someone we could hire from with outside. It just helps, we have, we have someone who's expressed, I want to improve, I want to continue my improvement, I want to get this certification. I want to help in a different way. I have a different career aspiration. Um, it's not. Really all that different in concept to, we have some, a leadership academy, people choose to, you know, go through that and say, hey, I'd like to. Um, go and get my, finish off my degree as a um, as an assistant principal or principal or something like that and go down that avenue. Uh, someone else might say curriculum. This, the the difference is that's formal schooling, formal processes, formal programs. There aren't many of those types of programs around in the area. An alternative certification process, which means it's an in-house building model. Like someone gets their certification through, let's say, two to three years of work internally to the organization. It helps them to um achieve what their goals are.
So we're voting here or looking at this as. A change of an alt certification process, not a position. I see those as two very big roles, like, like a special education teacher. That's a big role. A school counselor is a very big role. And pushing those together, I can see that causing problems because. That's going to be asking a lot of somebody, so. If my understanding is correct, this special ed teacher will not be the school counselor. They have the ability as the special ed teacher to assist. The students with counseling problems. Without having to send.
Under, under the guidance of the school counselor or a mentor who would have to be a certified school counselor. And through that process and through whatever other learning experiences, we'd be able to put together to meet the competencies of school counseling. That person can work towards certification. Well, I think, I think what we're, so you're correct in saying, like, we would not want that to be the. Job description or concept for all of our special educators to be doing that. That would. job description or concept for all of our special educators to be doing that. That would be this is, this is a special circumstance.
Right. I think it's, it's not that the district is saying, hey, we have this role that we want to fill, this extra role we're filling. This is a person saying, I have the certification. I want to add in this, it seems to meld. I have people here who want to support that, but Department of Education has a specific process in this case that this has to be followed.
Right. We, we would then need to have a conversation to change the persons.
So we're trying to override the Department of Education?
Trying to, I would say, I would say we're trying to, we're trying, it's a good question. It's a good way of looking at it. Um, and it's not a wrong way of looking at it. I would say we're trying to work with the department to help this person get what they would want to do or what they would need and perhaps possibly benefit the district in the process. It, you know, what you'd end up doing once you have a job description, because like we don't hire people, I don't want to hire someone if I don't have a job description. So the person's hired, works as a special educator, but really focuses on the social emotional aspects of special ed, not the other aspects of special education. And this uh, individual wants to do some of the school counseling. Like, and to learn that and to assist and to do that. So yeah, it would then, we would probably change the contract, not the amount of money that someone's getting or anything of that nature. But to include these types of skills, change the name, then, and the requirement would be that you'd have to have a certification. That requirement then makes it so that we can say, okay, hey, we have this, this need, let's say it's a fifty fifty, fifty percent this or forty percent this, sixty percent that, whatever it is, we'll say fifty fifty. All right. So if you have that being the case, we can say to the department, this person's going to be doing some of that work. Um, and is in need of getting that certification. And so, and we have a mentor and the person's hired to do that job and so forth. It's um, so another way of looking at it is this. You have an individual who wants to grow, we'd be helping them grow. Um, they'd still be doing their job. They'd be able to do a little bit more um, as part of that same job, probably and be, you know, because as, and it gives the district an opportunity to hate, I don't want to use the word experiment in a, in a, because I don't, I think that sounds bad. Um, I don't think there's any risk involved here, like, like, like an experiment would be. Um, but to try something a little bit different uh, in, in era when we know there are such high social emotional needs in our schools and in particular our elementary schools. And so this is a way for us to, with really very, like I said, no risk, no added cost. Or not much of one. I mean, I suppose if there's some workshops or mentor stipends or something like that, that would be an added cost, but not a significant addition to any sort of um, line.
So does this person have any education in the other? Let's say they're a special education teacher. Do they have education in the counseling department at all? And they just want to kind of add to it and really get into it now or, or and vice versa? I'm not seeing, I don't want this person to be better educated. I feel like I'm just trying to like.
You're trying to understand it. It is, it is, it is different, right? So um, I would say another, so there's another way of looking at it. I'll answer your question in a minute. Um, is that the person we have chosen as a district that people who are in the um, job of behavior specialist hold a special ed certification. So that's what we have here. Um, behaviors uh, are dealt with very, you know, in, in a restorative or what we say a constructivist manner. Which means we're not they're not punishing a lot, like they're not, they're not doing like assistant principal work, right? So they do more of, they do it through more of a counseling lens anyway. And so this will be strengthening that process, we think. Um, your question however was what was your question again? Do they have, is the school, do they have any background? That would be, that would be the purpose of the alt certification would be, first of all, the Department of Ed would have to issue them a statement of eligibility. They'd have to do a check on their transcripts and so forth to see if they would even qualify. If they didn't, then couldn't do it anyway. But what's that? No, I'm not going to use names.
Oh, I was like, why do you have to, I thought you meant you had to go.
No, 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 no. I mean, you, you can do what, do what you want. Um, so that if, if, if anyone, I'm just, I'm trying to speak just in general, because we're in a public session. So if, if uh, someone has the statement of eligibility for that and is in the position, they then can go and do an alt certification. And so then that alt certification, which could be, let's, let's say it's like um, eight pages of competencies that you have to write down. I have this, I've, I have this competency. Here's where I got it from this class that I took on my transcripts. Um, I took, you know, the next one might be, I did it by going to these workshops and I've done a reflection summary paper. And then here, you might have like four or five spots and go, I need to take four or five classes. So it might require them to get more.
I guess I, I do understand the alt programs. I understand. I'm looking at the heavy hitting of both of these, both sides.
Sure.
And saying those as an alt is just I'm just trying to understand that. That's all. That's, I, I do understand the alt process. I know, I know, I just was like. I don't know. And I do also, I do see the relationship there and I get what you're talking about with all that. I do, I'm just looking to see if like.
Well, look at it, I think of it this way. Here's another way of looking at it. Is that in years past, and it's probably been quite a while since this is the case because of how colleges have changed with their programming. Um, there used to be, like teachers used to go and get their master's degree in counseling. And so they would do that. They would do their learning process to get certified in counseling to do that. Um, and in that process, they would have some sort of an internship and, and things of that nature. So in concept, it's not a lot different. Except that an alternative certification cannot, it is not allowable to do that type of alternative certification without being in the role. Or in part of the role, not being part of your job. So
It's a lot like an apprenticeship program.
It, in this case. Similar.
So, so could you simplify it for me? We have job descriptions for special educators. We have job descriptions for school counselor. This is a job description for someone who can do both or either. Is that correct?
I don't think it's, is this job description or an alt program allowance?
The job, it is a job description that blends the two existing job descriptions together a little bit. Um, and then by having this concept, this title, I guess you could say. It would allow us to then um, have any individual who had this title to do an alternative program, because they would be, they would have the job title. They would be in that job that would require that certification. So you have to be in the job to re, whatever, whatever certification you want, you have to be in the job hired for that job to be able to do an alternative certification. As it stands, this individual has the right side of that description certification. So if that person wants to go into the left side of that job, they would have to go to a formal program, find one and go through the, the traditional channels. Um, this may possibly allow us to, we believe us to allow the person to go through a non-traditional channel for certification. Yes.
I understand, I think, what it is you're trying to do. Helping this person and at the same time feel the need that we have.
Or a potential future.
Right. My question is this. This is a new job, basically. New job, new job description.
Sure.
New job. Don't we have a policy that says new jobs have to be uh, posted and internal people can apply?
I don't know. We, we do for the JR SSA. I'm not sure we have that same one for the JREA. I'd have to look at that. Um, I mean, it can be done.
I'm, I'm just thinking of I know you've got uh, unique credentials you're looking for and app. Um, but the maybe people here who are either on one side of this job, right, or the other, as you've been talking about here, that might like this job. And I'm, I'm a little concerned about morale or what might be said if other people don't have a chance to apply for it.
Oh, because it's being specifically made for one person.
Yeah. I mean, what if I were the the uh, special ed person and I wanted this job? Now, I don't know whether it has more money attached to it or not, or not, but maybe it, maybe it would be something that I, I would like. I think that's, I think that's personally, I think it's a little unfair to not, if you're going to have this, not to open it up for other kids to apply for it.
But you had said, to go on to that, you had said that this might be the beginning of hybrid roles. Can you use that word? It keeps coming to me as I'm looking at this.
It's a hybrid.
And, and so that doesn't mean that we can't have other people doing this. It's simply what this is saying is we have one particular person who has this certification and is doing these skill sets. Wouldn't mind having those recognized so that they can actually get certified through the traditional channels. The way to do that is to create a hybrid title. But it's not changing their role or anybody else's. It's not hiring a new person. It's not. This is their.
No, but it's a new, but in essence, it's a new job description.
Well, it's a new title.
It, it, Forbes, you're right. It's a new job description. It's a, it's a, it's a different position. It is. I realize what I'm asking is, is a little unorthodox. And so it is um, and it's why we're having this conversation and we don't need to make the decision tonight.
And I'm not, I'm not trying to say like, I, I'm like, what, one, trying to understand it. Two, I'm looking at it as these two different entities that are very specific and very taxing and hard and then pushing them together.
You know, another, another, another maybe way of going on the hybrid conversation is that it is not atypical. It isn't, in, in some districts, usually smaller districts, to have someone who's a teaching principal. So they'd be certified as a teacher and they'd be certified as a principal and they'd have those two roles. Um, one's administrative and one's classroom. And so it's, it's a, it's not the same. I, I get it. Um, it is, but it is uh, similar and is something that has been a long-term type of um, role. So again, as a teacher, you have, yes, that's a intensive job as a principal. That's an intensive job. Often their modalities or what's expected is a little bit, is a little bit different. So.
And I guess maybe I'm looking to at the fact that like, special education is a major, counseling is a major, like those are, those are big.
Sure.
And then like, if you were to say, you know, we're going to have a special educator with, you know, they're going to do an alt in history. Like, you know what I mean? It's just, it seems to be too very specific and like big, big roles.
Sure. Yep. You are correct.
Could the supervisors, um, instructional associates be changed to parent educators?
The, yeah, I mean, really what we're, we, we can certainly change anything. Um, because it's not an official anything um, at this point in time. And typically, again, the, the board doesn't necessarily approve job descriptions. The reason why this is more of a, a, a job concept and title. And we'd have to adjust the job descriptions to have the right language and so forth. It's a concept.
So going off of what he said, like if if you put this as a job description or a title, new job.
Then, then you can open it up to other school counselors that want to help with the special ed or special ed that want the counseling pieces and combine them as people want them. Would be my understanding?
What were you going to say?
Realistically. I don't know how many other people want this.
I don't know anybody who wants that, to be honest with you. But I'm just trying to, like, I guess, thinking of the students, like, a special education teacher needs to, that's a, that's a role. I guess maybe I'm not understanding the, the, the maybe I'm not understanding how they're going to mix. Because I see a special, I guess, being a special educator, I see that as like I, I don't know anything else that comes to mind except for like a heavy task of like, that is like I don't know. I think I'm just confused.
Or, or during a time of working with a student who has some um, identified needs or unidentified needs for that matter, as a special educator, you typically know how to um, reinforce instruction, maybe uh, state something in a different way that uh, provide a different experience for someone to, for a specific learning process, whether it be the academic or behavioral. And a counselor um, then would if they have gone through either a program or gone through training or gone through mentoring or never have some skills to also add, add to that to um, support kids in a, in a slightly different way perhaps.
I, I could be overthinking it. I'm just.
Yep. So.
My my mom was a parent educator and she took formal training beyond the normal. I don't remember the letters for it. Um, CPI?
Crisis Prevention Intervention?
Yes. So she had that training and then she went beyond and got I don't even know what it was called, but an entire certification based on those behaviors. And her school district that she had worked for did kind of the same thing and created this new position for her because she had parent educator and this other behavior piece. They they did the same thing, but without it wasn't a whole new position they, they were hiring for. If somebody wanted to go get the thing, absolutely. Well, gladly take more people that have the behavior training. But it was so that she, she knew the job and the kid she was working with needed this extra behavior piece. And so she asked to get all the certifications to be able to provide the service that she saw that was needed.
So for me, we're simply talking about a job description. We're not talking about implementation. We're not talking about posting jobs, because that's a, that's determined by the JREA contract. Okay? So to me, we're simply talking about do I approve a job description? Now, from my perspective, you have a counselor job description, you have a special education job description, and this is a job description for someone who is going to do both. Good luck finding one, but if the superintendent believes that he has the ability to fill that job description, then I'm going to say, yeah. Because I think it's a worthwhile job. If we could get a hunter up, that'd be great. So.
Is Jen Horn online? Because I might. She might have a different way.
Oh, yeah, she is. I could uh, patch her through.
Is that okay? Okay. I don't think she'll be long. She's a lot more condensed in her conversation than I am.
All right, Jen, you should be able to speak though.
Thank you. Um, I appreciate the conversation. What I would say is, as we are looking at more and more, this ties in to all of our budget conversations. We're looking at more and more students with trauma and social emotional needs. I couldn't agree more with Charlie. If we have people who are interested in working first in that social emotional category. And are also interested in having school counselor training as part of their toolbox. I can't imagine why we wouldn't allow that to happen. I will also say that. Special educators generally aren't going to want to pick up school counseling and school counselors generally. Aren't going to want to pick up special ed training. But the behavior specialists in each building. That is what they do. And having the opportunity to be dual certified. Is required, it's just they require the, the opportunity to have a job that lets them do that. Which is what we ask our, our behavior specialists who have caseloads of. V- very small special ed caseloads, but very intense. Social emotional support. So that's what, that's what we're looking for in this job description. Are there people out here who are interested in doing? Just a week, a different niche job.
Thank you so much, Jen. Sorry, I didn't know she was on. I would have asked for her first.
I kept texting, please someone pick me.
She's, she always speaks so well. I'm sorry.
In fairness. She, she texts me.
I would have asked her first. So sorry, I just, she always like. One of the smartest people I know is Jen. But anyways. Thank you so much.
Anyway, that's, and I also would say there are very, the, this is few and far between. Most people who want to be a school counselor want to be a school counselor, but we are finding people who really want to work. With this, this population of kids that other people are really worried about working with. And so. All hands on deck. Let's, let's let those people who, who find joy and are gifted do all that they can here.
Yeah. And Forbes, there's the whole. Those people like, there's a. Crowd of people who wanna come in and do that. We just open that up, create that position and. Bam, dreams are made.
One, you know, whatever.
One, Jesus, or one, we'll take one.
I don't know what the uh, teachers' contract says about. Us, process on these kinds of things, but. Um, I would like to have that followed, whatever their, whatever it says in their contract. Has to be.
The G R A, G R E A contract does not require us to post for positions to J R S S A does. Um, but this is a Jerry and frankly, if anybody else in district. Wanted to take advantage of this, I don't know why we wouldn't say, great. Go.
Right, sir. Leadership kind of thing.
Different, different ways of, I wa- I was. She took it as a direction of need. I was looking at it from the standpoint of the adults saying, how can we? Support our people and in moving.
I'm so sorry. It took me long to get there. I'm really sorry.
But well, it's different. It's different. And again, if.
And like I said, I was stuck.
Jen had just had the foresight to be here.
I've been here the whole time.
Yeah, I know. I'm just joking.
Right.
Okay.
Anyways, my bad. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen.
My pleasure.
But I do appreciate Kim, your questions and Forbes, your desire for us to follow, you know, appropriate protocols. Um, but going to your questions, it's important that we talk about these types of issues because. Isn't that what a lot of our budget conversations are about? The changing face of education, the changing face of learners in our community makeup. And the needs, the real needs of not just children, by the way, but, but the real needs of. Of people and, and um. We live in a society that is very fast-paced. That we deal with screens non-stop, that we don't have enough interpersonal conversations with one another. People are lonely. And uh, and then there are young children who, as their brains are developing and uh. You know, whether they are subject to neglect or some sort of abuse or. Um, whether it be too much screen time or whether it just be something that is ju- genetic, you know, that through their um. Which, which is, you know, all of us, you know, nature and nurture go together. And so we need to do our best to help support. And have empathy for those kids and, but also it, it's nice to have empathy, but also be able to help them.
So we're pushing this to a new level. School counselor and regular education teacher. That's what they are.
Yeah.
A lot of teachers are, I, I don't know, this could even be open to. Having regular teachers getting some of that. I can remember being like. Kids would come to, kids come to teachers. That's their safe person. That's who they wanna talk to. And as a teacher, you're like. Wow, this is way above my brain. Like, I, I haven't been trained.
Wouldn't wanna touch either.
Yeah, a hundred percent.
Touch, that's right.
So that's another piece, you know, if they had some. Tools, like she said, in their toolbox. So another layer to this could be.
Having this come to be. May open up the. Door for a regular. Ed teacher to say, hey, can I do this too? And. I don't see why not.
If it, if it goes together, right? Yeah, there's a lot. I think there's a lot to that. You're right. And I'm thinking the same thing, but. Just thoughts, I guess, right now.
Okay.
Be many more discussions.
So uh.
Promotion.
Great, great discussion and ready for a motion. Yes.
I move that we uh. Prove the school counselor, special education teacher uh, job description.
Okay.
I'll second.
Move second from. Lisa, thank you, Lisa. And thank you, Charlie. And is there any more discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, that passes seven zero. All right, very good. And now we're on to board committee updates.
Education meeting on the twelve.
What's that?
Education meeting on the twelve.
So we're gonna set up in here at four thirty. Committee to the uh. Public hearing. So if anybody wants to show up at four thirty and just go all the way through, uh, feel free. I'll be here.
We gotta be here.
What the heck?
Um. Communication committee is. Working on finding our next date.
Yeah, I just sent out another um, reminder. A couple hours ago, maybe an hour ago, just trying to get everybody on the same page. When we can meet, have maybe heard from. A third of the committee, maybe. A little bit more. So if. You haven't already responded to that survey, please feel free to. I don't know if anybody else is on the topic, but you know. Or yeah, Jen, uh. So. People wanna respond to that, we can hold the meeting.
Finances meeting on the nineteenth.
Wellness committee is also meeting on the nineteen. Sales policy meeting.
I'm on vacation on the nineteenth, I hear. I'm just joking.
And I would like to schedule a goals committee meeting on the twenty-sixth. January.
Yes. I said a month.
Goals committee, are you on the? So.
On what day?
Goals, no, Daisy, you're on it.
Yeah, the three of us.
And Kim's on too. Okay, yum.
I think that was Charlie.
January twenty-sixth. Uh, four thirty. I am tentative for that day. Double fruit canal that morning. On the policy meetings at four thirty. I don't know when all of your other meetings are that aren't as important as policy, but.
Oh my gosh.
Facilities is meeting on the twenty-third.
What's meeting on the twenty-third?
Is that a ten?
Oh, school board.
And um, is, am I correct in saying that Forbes is? Um, taking, there's all the facilities and the finance and.
No.
We have not discussed that yet.
Okay.
No.
I was trying to um, you know, encourage you to join. You know, cause there's some openings.
Yeah, so I was gonna bring up is just that we do have a couple openings, obviously with having a new board member come in partway through a term. Um, Paul was involved in um, finance. Facilities and he also was signing manifests. I believe John is at least temporarily taking over manifests. And if um, Forbes is not to join those committees, uh. Due to lack of interest or unable to be turning most times. Board, the committees would just have to be more careful about making sure that the two remaining members would both be there because if not, then you're. Out of quorum, so.
And for the solar subcommittee, since Paul was on that, do I need to find another? I know we've had these discussions about whether or not the subcommittee.
I mean, that one's a little bit different, just because that was a committee made up of board members and members of the public. Um, cause that's a subcommittee of a committee. Um, so in terms of notify, notifying and everything, you still need to apply to those same rules in terms of notification meetings, minutes. Making sure that you have a quorum of your members, but it's not about a member, a quorum of the school board. It's a quorum of whoever comprises that committee. So if Paul's not there and you still have four people, you would just have to make sure you have a majority. Or more of those remaining people. But if you do want an additional member, you could obviously recruit for that.
Forbes, do you have any thoughts on uh?
I have no more thoughts either.
Any, any other committee uh? Well, this is on.
Three fifteen.
Very good. Then uh, what about board matters? Does anybody have any board matters that they'd like to report?
Can I actually, um, earlier we voted. I need to abstain from the December tenth because I wasn't there. But I didn't speak up soon enough, so.
Okay.
I need that fixed.
Are you okay with me? Just recite that and we want to take a revote?
I don't know.
Right. So then we voted on the minutes, well, we should have.
The tenth, I think I should have abstained from that because. Wasn't there.
Then what we want to do is revisit the vote on those minutes and since we're still in session. I think we can do that. So. Can I get someone to? Reopen the vote on the minutes?
I can do it, cause it was me anyway. So I'll make a motion to reopen. The minutes? The vote? That one.
I'll second.
Okay, thank you, Lisa. Okay. So um. I'm gonna assume as though further discussion. So um. Could we get a motion?
I vote to approve the minutes from the December tenth. Uh, public and non-public. I'll second.
Okay. And uh. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. Okay, so we've got.
I know, we're waving this time.
Should be a five zero two vote.
Yeah.
There were not non-public.
That's right. It was just public. Okay. So we'll um. Assume that that's okay with you, Kim, for men that will be public.
Yes.
For December tenth. And the vote is uh, five in favor to abstain.
And that was.
Publish minutes for December tenth.
The amendments that you guys made. Allowing that original vote to still contain the night, uh, the nineteenth. Because you guys just.
The nineteenth was the Monday I was there.
You guys have addressed the tenth. Are we comfortable with having that original vote still applied to the nineteenth? Or do we need to take an additional vote and just do the nineteen?
I think it's good.
We'll uh. Say that original vote, the group of the nineteen, but that will cover the nineteen that was still standing.
I guess I kinda sorta have a board matter just cause we haven't formally addressed it um, in any capacity here. Um, just welcoming uh, Forbes, Forbes Farmer to the board. Um, he is taking over for Paul O'Malley, who we announced had prior. Resigned. Forbes will be here until the end of this year. And then obviously we have the election to. Fill the remaining two years of that seat. Obviously Forbes could still apply to that if he would like. Be voted in for the remaining two years, but we do have somebody here filling that seventh uh, board position. Now until the end of this. Voting cycle, I guess. So.
Thank you.
Thank you, Forbes.
March fifteenth is the date.
And we also uh, need to have our second public comments section. If uh, there's none of the public.
Uh, we do have a few members of the public. I think they're all frequent flyers, but just to make sure, I'll put the policy back up real quick. Um, they're all online at this point. So if you guys wanna make a public comment, please do so by raising your hand virtually. That can be done at the bottom of your screen. First name, last name and town of residence, please.
So we have all those uh, people organized now into a list or.
No, I know. It's just that we have a couple, we have like two or three people that usually will attend most meetings. So we have a, we have a small following of people at this point online.
So uh. There being no public comments and uh, I guess no more board matters or futureized. And we'll take a, a motion for you then.
Daisy? I make a motion for a drink.
I second.
Okay, very good. Thank you, Dave.